Good afternoon and welcome to the Chatham Select Board March 23, 2021 meeting. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify me. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, chapter, general, open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 23, 2020 order imposing certain, imposing strict limitations on the number of people that gather in one place. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that those persons who would like to listen to the meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 134208476, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. So for efficiency, while we are using this remote format, please mute your audio until called on, which you can do by using, by using the Teams app. When you're called on, you can use the Teams app, the hand-raising feature in the app, or if you're on the phone, please speak out and I will call on you at the appropriate time. Equally important, please disable your video until the appropriate time to present or comment. We have to remember this is a business meeting. So to get us started, we're going to do a roll call to establish we have a quorum of the Board of Selectmen right now, and then further down, down the agenda, we'll call the, the Affordable Housing Trustees to order as well. So let's see, I'm going to call in Selectman Kokolas.
Present.
Selectman Castro.
Present.
Selectman Dykens.
Present.
And Selectman Metters.
Present.
And I'm present, obviously. Okay, we have a quorum. The first order is to accept the meeting minutes of March 16, 2021. Any of the typos you can send along to Shawna via email, but if there's any changes to the substance of the meeting minutes, we'll do so. So a motion to accept the meeting minutes.
Madam Chair, a motion to accept.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any, any changes to the meeting minutes? Then, okay, we'll take, we'll take a vote. Selectman Kokolas.
Aye.
Selectman Metters.
Aye.
Selectman Castro.
Aye.
Selectman Dykens.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. All right, great. Okay, so moving along, we have a lot to unpack tonight, so I hope you're ready to get some work done. Just a couple of public announcements and agenda, and I'll, I'll start. I just want to just note the passing of Kurt Halfax. If everybody remembers Kurt, he was interest, he was instrumental as the Chair of the Chatham Harbor Planning Committee that ended up being our South Coastal Committee, Harbor Committee that is present to this day. He also served on a number of nonprofits in town, so he definitely be missed. He was a lovely man and we send our condolences to his family. Also, some other things that are going on that we're pretty excited about is we will be doing a special community forum on the Monomoy Schools on Thursday. Mark your calendars, April 15 at 6:30 PM. And we will be posing questions in relationship, in relation to our outstanding school system, mostly about the regional agreement, the statutory assessment, and we will be putting together, we haven't finalized it, but a list of questions that we will pose at the public forum that will be made public in a press release as well as in the agenda at the appropriate time. So that's almost completed and we'll, we'll be getting that to the public as soon as possible. Also coming up, but I don't have a date for it yet, we are considering a joint Select Board, Board of Health meeting on COVID mandates and the summer events that are, that we need to talk about. And we know that the, the governor hasn't changed and, and CDC hasn't changed their mandates yet, even though the vaccination process is in place, but time doesn't stop and we have some things we're going to have to make some decisions about. Okay, so, and another note is I had a request from a Select Board member that one of our items in the business agenda related to our annual town meeting article review, which is the Home Rule Petition, the Real Estate Transfer Fee for Affordable and Attainable Housing, accept public comments during the discussion. So if, if, if nobody has any objection, we will accept public comment during that, that one item, which is number three, item five, Home Rule Petition, Real Estate Transfer Fee. Other than that, as we move forward right now, we will have a coronavirus update and then we'll accept public comments on our business agenda, and that includes the Declaration of Water Conservation. We will be acting as water commissioners at that time, and then we will convene the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees to discuss the annual town meeting articles that we're reviewing on affordable and attainable housing. And I hope people are watching because it's quite substantive and I'm very excited that we're bringing, we're potentially bringing a lot of this to the, to the forefront. After that, we'll have a revote on the prevailing wage exemption for the town and committee appointments. Then we will convene in executive session to discuss another affordable housing trust, with the housing, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees on, on, on a consideration for a housing project. So that's a lot, but I'm, I'm, I'm confident we'll get through it. And Dean, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Really had a couple of questions. Your first announcement about the Monomoy School Forum, is that the forum of the elementary school, or is that?
Yes.
That I had requested, or is that going to be a different one?
Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll add further, and your connection is a little off, Dean, so you might want to turn your extent around.
It is.
Yeah, at the, at the, at the Monomoy Regional School Committee Forum, Selectman Castro had, had talked about the idea of us having a, our own Chatham Community Forum to really talk about what the citizens of the town are, are, are thinking about in relationship to our elementary schools. So that was the catalyst to bring us forward with this community forum.
So that, that discussion will be part of that?
Yes, it will. Yes.
The other, the other question relates to the agenda item, the agenda items under seat tonight that deal with articles to town meeting. So you, I know we're going to be convening the, the trust, the trustees of the trust, but the actual voting on the articles to place them and make recommendations to town meeting, if we, if we get that power on each of these, that will be limited to the members of the Select Board, right?
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Okay, Corey, your hands up, and then I was going to ask for public announcements.
Okay, I was just going to make a agenda item request if possible.
Yes, go right ahead.
You know, spring's here, we're driving through West Chatham, we see the contractors are back at work, so if we could just get an update to the, I guess, correspondence we sent to Mass DOT with the list of concerns and questions, to see if they've given us any feedback and if that feedback has been received to the town, you know, what the, what the, what the response was. So if, you know, just kind of see where that stands would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, thanks. And, okay, so any other board members have a public announcement or agenda item request? Not tonight? Okay, any of the public have a public announcement or agenda item request? Oh, Jill, yes, Jill? Go ahead, Jill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to just let the board know, we have not received a response yet to our correspondence, so I don't have anything to report, but the schedule has been updated to the town's website, so that's, that's definitely there for you to review, and if, if we need to do an update, we can certainly schedule that.
Okay, thank you. Great. All right, any other members of the public wishing to? Okay, I don't see any. All right, thank you. So let's go to our coronavirus COVID-19 update with Director of Natural Resources, Dr. Dunkinson. First up, Dr. Dunkinson.
Good evening, thank you, Madam Chair. So for tonight's coronavirus update, a quick run-through of some of the numbers. As of 5 o'clock this evening, we had 11,395 cases of COVID-19 on Cape Cod. That was an increase of 94 cases since yesterday, and that's important because over the last six days, we have been averaging above 80 cases a day on Cape Cod, where the previous six days or so, we were down in the 40 to 60 range of cases. So we have clearly seen an uptick in the number of cases here on Cape, and as I'm sure everybody's aware from what's been in the news recently, the vast majority of that uptick appears to be centered in the Barnstable-Yarmouth area. Right now, the statewide 14-day positivity average is at 2.2%. In Chatham, we are currently at 4.66%. Barnstable was at 7.49% and Yarmouth at 5.88%. So that clearly shows this increase in the number of cases that have been occurring on Cape Cod and where it's been highlighted, if you will. Both Barnstable and Yarmouth, as of last week's weekly public health report, shifted back into the red zone. So if you give me a second, let me share my screen here. I'll just run through a couple of the figures that we usually show. So here is Chatham's monthly case count and this month to date. As everyone can see, we had that spike back in December, January, and into February. Right now, as of this month, we've had 22 cases so far in March, so we are averaging about one case a day, and we currently have nine active cases in Chatham right now. The age distribution of our cases to date, and as I said, we had 285 active case, or not active cases, we have 285 cases since the pandemic began. And the interesting thing you can see here is that the age demographic is now kind of flattening out among all the various age groups. If you remember early on, when we started this plot, we had a large proportion of our cases were in the kind of 80 to 89 and 90-plus-year-old group, and that percentage has now been dropping as we're seeing more and more cases in the, you know, the middle-range demographic, if you will, you know, the kind of 40 to 69-year-olds, and we're still seeing a fair number of cases in the younger demographic, you know, the school age and, and, you know, early teens and whatnot. But, you know, we're definitely seeing a broader range of age groups impacted by our recent cases. We're not seeing any one particular age group having all the cases as we were seeing earlier on in the pandemic. And then just quickly, here's our average daily incident rate in Chatham, and as you'd probably know, this only comes out weekly, so this is as of last Thursday, and you can see that we had that spike back in, you know, late December, January into February. Things then dropped off fairly precipitously. Recently, they've gone back up again, and then it is now, as of last Thursday, it was plateauing, which is not dissimilar to what we're seeing basically around the country that has the public health community somewhat concerned, that we are no longer seeing the drop-off in cases that we were seeing, but things have kind of stagnated, and unfortunately, sometimes that is a precursor that there may be another spike coming. And, you know, we're seeing that to some extent here in Barnstable. Whether or not it is related to the P1 variant or the so-called Brazilian variant that was first detected here in Barnstable County, we just don't know yet. The state did send out a mobile testing unit on Sunday to the Hyannis area and targeted a number of, targeted individuals that had been identified as close contacts for some of the recent cases in that area, and some of those tests are going to be further tested to see if in fact they are related or they are the P1 variant, which, you know, based on all the data to date, is more highly contagious than the regular, if you want to call it regular, the regular COVID-19 strain. And then just the final graph, this is one which shows our status for vaccinating Chatham residents, and I've included two graphs on this figure. The bottom one is the first one you saw as of March 9th, the number of individuals by percentage per capita in each age range that had been vaccinated, either partially vaccinated, meaning they had one of the two doses for the Pfizer or Moderna vaccine, or fully vaccinated, meaning they'd had both doses as well as one dose of the new J&amp;J vaccine. And then the top graph is a week later on March 16th, similar to other state data. This information is only provided on a weekly basis at the town level, but I just thought it was interesting to put both graphs on the same page, so you get a sense of where we were from week to week. You know, our numbers in the 75 and above group have gone up a little bit, but the most significant group was the 65 to 70-year-olds, and that reflects the fact that they were now one of the eligible groups to receive the vaccine. And as you probably know, as of yesterday, that was further opened up to people 60 and older, so I expect that, you know, this week or next week, more than likely, we will start to see some movement in that 50 to 64-year-old bracket. And again, these are based on a per capita basis, they're based on the 2010 census, which is what the state is currently using, and this does not reflect any Chatham residents that may have gotten their vaccine from some other state. So if you're a Chatham resident and you're saying Florida and you've gotten your vaccine or wherever, that's not reflected on those graphs. Those graphs are strictly for Chatham residents that have gotten vaccinated in the state of Massachusetts. And then just I wanted to quickly touch on, you know, some of the other changes that took place, as I mentioned, starting yesterday, the eligible groups receiving vaccine opened up to residents 60 and older, as well as certain workers, worker categories, if you will, and I just wanted to highlight the food service workers and folks working in restaurants and whatnot. We had a, that group also became eligible yesterday, and then today on our call, our health agents call, Senator Seer was in attendance and spoke about a targeted outreach, which is going to be happening. There was some targeted outreach a couple of weeks ago to the school teachers when they came eligible, but the county is going to be doing targeted outreach through each individual town's health department to the various restaurants, food service establishments in their community to try and get identified as best we can, all those individuals that are eligible but have not received the vaccine. to try and get identified as best we can, all those individuals that are eligible but have not received the vaccine. Lists will be developed by Barnstable County and then that information will be shared with Cape Cod Healthcare in the county. And there will be outreach directly to those individuals to schedule appointments for them here on Cape over the next couple of weeks. You know, recognizing that a lot of the folks in the food service and related industries, you know, may not have transportation, you know, they're seasonal workers and whatnot. So there is going to be targeted outreach by the county to that group to try to get them vaccinated as one of the ways of helping get the Cape's economy back going again for this summer. And then the other things I just wanted to touch on briefly were that there has been some changes to the number of people that can gather. And that increases to 100 people indoors and 150 people outdoors in event venues or in public settings. However, the number of people in household gatherings or private backyard parties remains at a limit of 25 for outdoors and 10 people indoors. And any other significant change that occurred yesterday was the change of the travel order, which changed from an order to a travel advisory. So basically, the $500 fine that was present in the travel order has now disappeared, if you will. And they requested people who travel out of Massachusetts and come back to the state quarantined for 10 days is basically now a request where prior to yesterday, it was mandatory. If folks only go out of Massachusetts and come back in within 24 hours, so if you just made a day trip to Rhode Island or Connecticut or, you know, Vermont or New Hampshire or Maine, you do not have to abide by the travel advisory. So that gives people a little bit more flexibility that they, you know, didn't have under the travel order. And then just the other thing is people who are fully vaccinated, and we've spoken about this before, to be fully vaccinated, 14 days has to have passed since your single dose of the J&amp;J vaccine or your second dose of the Pfizer or Moderna. Only under those conditions are you considered fully vaccinated. And if you have been fully vaccinated and you don't have any COVID-19 symptoms, you don't need to comply with the travel advisory. So that's just a quick summary of some of the recent changes effective yesterday. And we do have a lot of that information up on our website for people that want to get into the details. And then the other thing that I just wanted to mention, and we sent a press release out on this earlier, which I hope the board had a chance to review. But yesterday, we had a number of firefighter EMTs and paramedics that went around to 17 households in Chatham and vaccinated with the single-dose J&amp;J vaccine 24 individuals who are homebound, who really had no ability to get to a vaccination site. So our staff at the Health Division, working with the council on aging, with the police department, the fire department, Outer Cape Health Services made that happen. It's part of a, you know, effort around the state in some areas of the state. The state is providing that service. In other places, individual towns have taken on that responsibility. And I'm happy to say that Chatham completed ours yesterday, and we were one of the first towns in the Cape to do so. So with that, I think that's all I have for tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Bob. Can you, you speak about the 14 days after the second dose of, of your vaccine. You still need to wear a mask. It's still, you know, because I think a lot of people are confused and I've heard some of the, I'm sorry, we're getting some reverb here. Some of the shopkeepers downtown were having issues with people complying because they, you know, didn't think they had to wear a mask after they got a vaccination. And that's not true.
That, that is not true. The public health guidance remains the same. Whether you have vaccinated or not, wear a mask, continue to social distance, continue that proper hand hygiene. I suspect based on everything we're seeing in the data that we will be wearing masks for a significant period of time, whether it's going to be the rest of this year or not, but it's definitely going to be for quite a while.
Thank you. Dean has a question. Dean? Can you unmute Dean, please?
I think we'll be wearing masks as long as Dr. Fauci's around. I had a question about social distancing because I heard on the news yesterday that the CDC was looking at the six-foot distance and considering moving to three feet. Is that something that's in the works?
There, there is a lot. They are looking at it. They recently made that change in their recommendations for public schools or for schools that provided all the students are wearing a mask that they can social distance in the classroom. They can cut that distance down to three feet. However, when they're in areas like cafeterias where they're not wearing a mask because they're eating their lunch, the guidance is still six feet. There, right now, the guidance for adults, even adults, teachers and whatnot in schools is still six feet. I know there, there are some studies going on to look at that, but nothing has changed as far as that goes, with the exception of in the school setting.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay. Jeff?
Yeah, thanks, Shereen. Bob, once again, good job. I have three comments. I love the slides on Chatham, Chatham's experience with vaccines. Those are excellent. They can track it by, those are just excellent. So I would encourage you to continue those. Great outreach on the part of the EMTs, getting to those folks that are, that aren't ambulatory and that are, you know, sequestered at home. So great job by the entire team there. Then on the, on masks and social distancing and being conservative with respect to, you know, our public health. When we see a spike that we've had in Yarmouth and Barnstable over the last week and, and of uncertain origin, I think it's just, the CDC guidance is just being really circumspect and conservative with respect there, their advice, their advisory. Because who knows where, what's going on in Yarmouth and Barnstable right now. And I applaud the state coming down and doing testing and kind of focus testing as well. I think that's a really good idea. So great job. We've still got a ways to go, but we're getting there. Love those vaccination slides. Those are great. Those are really good.
And, yeah. Any other questions from the board? Okay. Any questions from the remote participants? Please raise your hand or speak it out. Okay, I'm not hearing any or seeing any. So thank you, Bob. As usual, very thorough report. And next is an update from our town manager, Jill Goldsmith. Jill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have anything new to report, but I do want to congratulate the team who went out to the house and homebound residents. There was a lot to do. In fact, there was registration with signatures that needed to get directly from those residents. So a lot of coordination and again, just kudos to our team. I have asked Alex for next week's meeting to provide an update on the new federal funding. We're still waiting for some guidelines, so we can, we can speak in generalities and at least disclose what we know for sure that we'll be getting for Chatham. So that will be coming next week. And that's all I have to report.
Great. Thank you. I, we were, I, I hope we didn't feel we were remiss in not congratulating everybody for their hard work on the, on the homebound. I always listened to the planning part of that and was super excited. So it was really good job. You're right. Okay. All right. Any questions for Jill from the board? Any from the remote participants? Okay, thank you. Great. We are going to move into the public comment period. And this is where you may speak to the business agenda items. Declaration of a water supply conservation. The annual town meeting review, consider acquisition of property at 230, 2337 Main Street and Zero Jordan's Trail. Consider declaration of 19 acres of town-owned property up on Middle Road. Home rule petition creation, creating a housing trust. Home rule petition CPA funds for both affordable and attainable housing. A whole, the home rule petition for real estate transfer, we will accept public comment at that time during the discussion. And you may comment on special legislation for the third revote of prevailing wage. And so, hands are up, or you can speak out and I'll make a list. So we have one speaker and it's Mr. Myers. Mr. Myers, welcome. Mr. Myers, you might want to unmute your mic, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I support all five of the affordable housing initiatives as warrant articles, especially the three home rule petitions. The petition for the real estate transfer fee will be particularly important in funding affordable and attainable housing. But I'll wait to comment further on that when it comes up during the business agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. The next person with their hand up is Elaine Gibbs. Elaine?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things, and this refers to the attainable housing. Section 6 and 6A say that to the maximum extent allowed by law, the properties will be offered to current year-round residents, municipal employees, employees of local businesses, households with children attending schools in the town of Chatham. And that assumes they meet the financial requirements. And that's for both attainable and affordable. And I'm hoping they will, whoever's presenting will talk about what the legal restrictions are. How can we enforce that to make sure they are going, if it's a lottery system, how, what are the limitations by law that we make sure that they do go to Chatham residents, employees, et cetera, and people with children? Because that's the whole point of this. Because there is concern that they could go to people from, you know, western part of the state that has no ties to Chatham at all and no, no friends, no employment. And the only other thing I'd ask is, with the housing public engagement, it seems to me that between now and town meeting, there should be some kind of data provided, particularly as we're considering the four lots on Jordan Trail. Is that going to be more? I, I, I don't know how we can purchase property without knowing how many units are, are being projected for that spot to see if it's a good return on our investment. And this says it's going to happen after it's approved at town meeting. I think some of those discussions need to be, you know, if you're spending $2 million on a second piece of property beyond this current one, how many units are going to be there to make it a good investment? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. And, okay, next is the chair from the Community Housing Partnership, Carolyn McClellan. Welcome, Carolyn.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. I do have some things I'd like to say about the transfer tax bill. Wait on that. And outside of that, I just want to thank you all for the hard work you've done. And I know you're trying to push through a lot of complex problems and I just genuinely appreciate your efforts. That's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, our next speaker is Rick Levitt. Rick, welcome.
Thank you, Shereen. I just want to say that I do support also the, all of the articles on affordable housing. And I will speak separately at the time when the transfer fee is, is discussed.
Thank, thank you, Rick. I do want to let everybody know that we do have town council on the call to, on the meeting tonight. So we'll have some comments probably from him on matters. Any other questions? Any other comments from our remote participants? Anybody by phone? Okay, all right. Hearing none, we're going to move on. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We're going to move on to our consent agenda. We have items that are routine and non-controversial. Any board member may request an item to be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration and discussion. Removing an item from the agenda does not require a vote. There's two items on the consent agenda tonight. One is the renewal of seasonal liquor licenses and the other one is amend temporary order seating regulations. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? I see Peter's hand is up. Peter?
Madam Chair, I, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All right, let's.
A comment, Madam Chair.
Okay, quickly.
Yeah, just, just it, the, I think it's straightforward and, and the, the amendment for a temper, temporary outdoor seating regulations just changes Board of Selectment's select board and at the end puts a, when, when the ending of the, after the emergency, whether it would have changed. So I see no problem with this.
Great. Thank you. We'll take a vote then. Board member Kokolas?
Hi.
Board member Metters?
Hi.
Board member Nacastro? Dean, I didn't hear you because you're muted, so.
I'm sorry. Hi.
Hi, thank you. Jeff?
Hi.
Chair says aye. So the consent calendar, consent agenda, calendar, agenda has passed 500. Okay. All right. So we have that. So we're gonna move into, we have no public hearings. So we're going to move into our business agenda. The first is the declaration of water supply conservation. And when we do make the motion, we'll be, and vote, it will be, we will be acting as the water commissioners, water and sewer commissioners. So Dr. Dunkinson, are you making this presentation to us? Yes?
Yes, thank you again, Madam Chair. This has become a pretty routine event for the board and for Chatham. We've included in part of your packet a couple of graphs. One shows the increase in water pumpage last year. And we, I included both 2019, 2020 and 2021 to show that, you know, as we expected with two things going on last year, both the drought as well as a larger number of people in Chatham for longer periods of time. Due to the pandemic, we saw a significant spike in water pumpage for that kind of June through September, even into October period. And that coincided with the drought period. And we included a graph of the USGS Observation Well that's located at the intersection of Route 28 and Morton Road, which shows that last summer and into the fall, the lowest period was significantly lower than it had been in, you know, the previous two years. Not unexpected, considering we were in the midst of a fairly significant drought, both in Massachusetts and on the Cape as a whole. So, you know, the recommendations for the voluntary water restrictions are the same as they've been the past couple of years. They would take effect on April 1st and be in effect through October 1. Outdoor watering would be limited to odd addresses on odd numbered days of the month. And conversely, even numbered days for even numbered addresses, outdoor watering would be limited to one inch or less for watering events. You really only need one inch of water to have a nice lawn. And outdoor watering would be limited to 6:00 PM to midnight. So in other words, if you want to go out and water your flower garden or your vegetable garden or something, you do that at that time because there's generally less water usage overall during that period. And one of the things we're trying to do, or some of the things we're trying to do is not only manage the aquifer levels, but also not overtax our pumping equipment. You know, you've heard that story from us before. A in-ground irrigation system, so if you have an automatic in-ground irrigation system, those should be set to water between midnight and 6:00 AM because that's our lowest water use period in pumpage time. And then there would be no washing of sidewalks or driveways. You know, it always frustrates me driving around and seeing somebody washing their sidewalk or washing their, you know, their driveway with potable water that the taxpayers are paying, you know, money to pump out of the ground, treat, distribute. And then they were using it for something that frankly, you don't really need to do. Mother Nature does that for us every time she rains. So that would be the recommendations, the same voluntary water use restrictions we've had the last couple of years. And frankly, we will continue to have going forward. You know, last year, we talked about the new water treatment plan coming online. Yes, it is online. It's functioning great. But that doesn't obviate the need to conserve water, both for the aquifer as well as to reduce the cost. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bob. I see everybody's hand up. Jeff?
Yeah, I, my only, and I'm fully in favor of it, but you know, my, my core question is, what prevents us from making this mandatory? Are we convinced that voluntary works? And I mean, are we not concerned about the aquifer and its levels right now? So, so Bob, what, why don't we get a recommendation that this is mandatory?
When it becomes man, when it becomes mandatory, there's other issues involved in terms of working. When it becomes mandatory, there's other issues involved in terms of working with DEP. The guidelines always say you start out with voluntary and see how things go. And then if, you know, conditions warrant, we can always come back to you with a recommendation for mandatory. You know, right now, we've had some rain events, there's a couple of more forecasts, so, you know, things may be settling out a bit. But generally, you go voluntary first, and then mandatory later.
Bob, I have a question. I guess, do we see a difference when we do this? Do you see a difference in the usage? It's probably hard to tell, because we're in a seasonal, a seasonal community, but is there, are we seeing significant differences?
Yeah, we do see some effect, you know, especially with the lawn watering and the irrigation systems. You know, we generally see spikes twice a day around, you know, the morning when everybody's getting up and taking their showers, and then around, you know, the dinnertime hour, the same kind of thing. And we can see those spikes kind of change, and then we might see a little bit more of a spike later in the evening, when people are out watering their lawns and irrigation systems kick in overnight. So, yeah, we can, we can see it. You know, it's hard to tell sometimes, you know, how much of it is related to water restrictions, or just people changing their habits. We're really trying to change people's habits.
Yeah, okay. And outreach is, do we get something in the water bill that will tell us?
Yeah, there'll, there'll be something in the water bills, we'll get it up on the website, we'll put out press releases, we'll have the signage around town, as you've seen the last couple of years. We get it up on the website, so, yeah, we try to get it out. There's generally a targeted mailing to the irrigation system companies, to make them aware that, you know, they need to work with their customers to change timers and whatnot, to be in compliance. As you probably know, starting this year, there were no new hookups to our municipal water system for irrigation systems. That change was passed a couple of years ago. And then, starting next January, because you put it off a year because of the pandemic, a separate water meter will be required for irrigation systems to go along with the change in rates that you adopted last year, which put a significantly higher rate on irrigation system water. Because again, it really doesn't make sense to spend all that time and effort to pump water out of the ground, and then put it right back on the ground through a sprinkler system. You know, if people want to have sprinkler systems, a well is really the way to go.
Yeah, okay. Peter, question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Bob, just, you may have sort of answered the question, but is the aquifer still low, or is it back up to approximately normal, given all the-
It's still lower than we might normally see this time of year. As you know, we didn't have a lot of snow, we didn't have a lot of snow melt this winter. It's coming back a little bit compared to where it was, you know, last fall. But we're still a little bit, what we consider below average.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Corey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bob, how are private wells factoring into this conversation? Because, I mean, obviously, if someone puts a private well in, they're taking it off, they're taking the draw off the town system, but it's still impacting the aquifer. So, do we know, have any, have any idea how many permits were pulled this past year? And how does this, how is that impacting this?
I don't, off the top of my head, know how many permits were pulled last year, in the last year, so I can certainly get that information, because you do need to get a permit from the Health Department when you put a well in. In general, we're pulling from two different aquifers. Most of the town wells are pulling from what we would call a deep aquifer. Most household irrigation wells are relatively shallow, and pulling from an upper shallow aquifer. So generally, you know, there isn't a lot of connection between the two. You know, and when you look at the volumes of private wells versus the volumes that the town draws out of the ground, they are significantly different. You know, a private well that might be used once a week for lawn irrigation is pulling a tiny, tiny fraction of what the town wells pull out, you know, on a given day. And so generally, you know, unless the drought, unless you're in a prolonged exceedingly severe drought, you know, the bigger impact is going to be, some of those private wells may go dry. Where the town wells, being much deeper, generally don't have that impact. But in terms of the volume being pulled out, it's really kind of apples and oranges.
Okay, great. Dean?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Bob, just following up on the question that Jeff asked about mandatory measures. I thought that you couldn't impose mandatory measures unless the state declared a state of emergency. I know Town Council's on the phone, on the call, maybe he could weigh in if he chooses to. But that was always my understanding.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the complexities. Yep, you're absolutely right. You know, if the town, if the town individually was really in dire straits, for whatever reason, we could go to the state directly, you know, as, as a single town. But generally, yeah, you'd want the state to declare, like they did last year, you know, some severe droughts in parts of the state, that, that allows the towns to impose more mandatory restrictions.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Does that satisfy your explanation, Dean? Is that okay?
Yes, yes.
Great, all right. Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Shereen. I just had a quick follow-up, Bob, not to belabor it, but, so, from a, from a town's perspective, what would be the, the bellwether for you to ring up the state and say, hey, we're having issues down here? And then, are those the, those the metrics, the indices that we ought to be monitoring down here? Because we mess up water, it's not good. So, so, what would be the metric? So, our pumpage, our level of the aquifer, and again, I don't want to belabor tonight, because we'll probably pass this voluntary ban, but, but what would those be? Because I think we need, we need, I want to monitor this stuff. We gotta, I think we had, we had an issue, close to an issue last year, and, you know, I want to be careful, there's not a lot of rain in March, it's been sunny every day.
Yeah, I, you know, I would recommend that we'd be looking at a couple of different metrics. One would be the number of hours that we pump from our wells, because generally, you don't want to pump from a well more than 16 hours a day, to then give the well some time to, quote, rest, and allow water to come back into its cone of where it draws from. The other, you know, criteria would be if we had some kind of catastrophic failure at some part of the infrastructure. You know, the water treatment plant goes down, we lose, you know, a couple of wells because of, you know, a spill of some sort, or bacterial contamination, or something like that. Or if we get into a real severe prolonged drought, you know, really bad, and, you know, the fact that groundwater levels are already starting out kind of behind the eight ball now, and then got even further behind, then we would be seriously coming back to you guys, you know, hopefully making a mandatory recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's helpful.
Okay. Any other questions for, for Bob? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Anybody?
Madam Chair?
Okay.
I'm wishing that the Board of Water Supply Conservation, in accordance with the General Bylaws, Chapter 26, Section 261-4, and implementation of the Conservation Member, measures as described.
Would you reword that to, say, the water commissioner?
Yes, the water commissioners.
Okay, all right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Let's take a vote. Oh, go ahead, Jeff. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want a follow-up report, I think, you know, especially with the peak demand coming up. It's March, I'd like to see something in, you know, May, June, July. I mean, I think we should, we need to stay on top of this, because I'm a little concerned about it, to be honest with you. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Jeff. All right, let's take a vote. Peter?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Chair says aye. All right, thanks. So we'll look forward to the report. I think some of that usually is in the Town Manager's monthly report, do we get that? So that information can be tracked that way, too, Jeff? Okay?
Yeah, I don't know, hours of pumping, I don't know, but, yeah.
Okay, all right, well, fine, we'll, we'll make sure that it's inclusive.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, so, we're going to convene the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees, and as, for discussion purposes and conversation, but when it does come to any motions or votes, the votes will be with the Board of Selectmen on moving these articles forward, so. But we do have to talk about some of the things within the packet that involve where, how we want to fund this, and whatnot, and might be inclusive of them. So let's include in, if we can convene the Board of Affordable Housing Trustees, I'll call to order and ask for an attendance. Peter?
Present.
Dean?
Present.
Jeff?
Present.
Corey?
Present.
Megan Story?
Present.
Bruce Bean?
Present.
And the Chair is present. Okay. All right, so, we have five particular items here. I do want to say that we've staffed, and we have brought a lot to the table, and very excited to bring this to town meeting, but we still have some work to do on, on, on this. We're trying to find housing opportunities for the town. We hear that we're not doing enough for the town, but I think it's important for people to understand, we're not the private sector, we move, we have to move a little slowly, in particular with state and, and our town laws here. I think we've done a good job building, doing a building block of getting us to here, and it's included some of the committees that we've appointed, the Affordable Housing Committee, which is now the Community Housing Partnership, the Housing Trustees, as well as CPA has been involved. And we applaud everybody who's been taking their time on this project over the last few years. So, saying all that, I want to welcome Katie Donovan, the Director of Community Development, and Ally Sabatino, Principal and Planner, to make a presentation on these related housing articles for the annual town meeting.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. We are really excited to be here tonight to talk about these exciting initiatives. As you mentioned, there's been a lot of work behind the scenes that have gone into, you know, into getting to where we are now, and still a lot of work to do in the future, but this is a, is a really great starting point. So, just, so we'll start tonight to talk about the private property acquisition. As the Board will recall, but for the public's benefit, we had issued an RFP for private land acquisition back in September of last year, and we were lucky enough to receive two proposals. We've been in negotiations with both property owners to date, and we have reached an agreement on one property, the property located at 2337 Main Street in Zero Jordans Trail. That property, Ally's going to pull up on the screen here, is approximately 2.44 acres, currently has an approved subdivision on it for, for lots, one for the existing home, and then three additional lots that go along with it. The property has approximately 185 feet of frontage along Route 28, Main Street area. So, so looking to that property, just in our initial analysis, what we, you know, know that we can build, you know, we have the three-lot subdivision that's approved, but we know that with an IA system, we could build approximately 15 bedrooms, and with onsite septic, we could build up to 10 bedrooms on that site. With sewer, we would not be, we would not be subject to those lower numbers of bedrooms, but we would take into account, you know, the area and what would be appropriate. And that's why the intent is to work with a housing and community engagement consultant to see what's actually appropriate for that area and for that lot. So, as was stated, we had entered into negotiations with the property owner through the Town Manager, and the original asking price for the property was $1,099,000. And we came to an agreed upon price, just below the assessed value, at $974,100. And so, we would like to, you know, talk to the, to the Board and the Trust tonight about the potential funding opportunities. So whether or not we'd like to see 100% affordable housing, up to 100, that would be up to 100% area median income, we could, or we could fund it, and that would be funded solely through the Trust. We, or we could fund through a combination of the Trust, Trust funds and free cash. And so, I had provided in the staff report some numbers relating to, you know, 50% and 75% for, you know, we would, so 50% of the houses would be affordable, 50% would be attainable, if we were, just to give a little bit more background there, if we were to use those numbers. So, again, you know, just an exciting opportunity that we have before us, and so I guess, you know, happy to answer questions, or have further discussion.
Okay, great, thank you. I guess one of the questions was brought up by one of the previous speakers about our, where we are at as far as local opportunities for housing. And this would be probably a good time to talk about that, and some contexts of, you know, qualifications and whatnot. We don't have to talk about it right this second, but I think it's, it's worthy of the discussion, and when we talked about how we're going to fund this, and, and, and in which way. So I guess my question is, what Ms. Gibbs had brought up was, how do we have assurances that this is, has the, according to the Section six and six A, that we are abiding by those rules? And what does that actually mean in the, in numbers, in percentages of who gets housing? Local, the local option for housing?
Sure. So, what, what, what would need to happen in order for us to request local preference through the state is a project, once it goes through the permitting process, the town would then request through the state, we could request up to 70% local preference for a, for an affordable housing project. And so, that would, that would be the process to do so. I believe the, what Ms. Gibbs had asked about regarding the six and six A, I think that was in the, the legislation regarding the Trust. And we do have to, as you had mentioned earlier, we do have Town Council on the call, and he may be able to speak to that, to some degree. I believe that was taken from another communities' trust articles. And so, just something that we thought would be beneficial, to be able to target local population as well, so.
Okay, so, so when we speak to the Trust, we can have that question answered?
Sure, sure. But, but the actual process to request local preference comes after the permitting phase.
Okay. And so that would probably come back to the Board for a discussion as we move through the process, and, and we'd, we would state our preferences, obviously. But it would be really good to get the community, the housing coordinator, consultant, feedback on, on, on the nuances of that as well. Everybody's got their hand up, Katie, so I'm just going to go ahead. Dean, you had a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With respect to the funding source, I'm interested in hearing the conversation, but I might be inclined to go with the 75% from the Trust, and 25% from free cash. That would allow for a mixture of affordable and attainable. I have a question for, for Katie. In order to accommodate 15 or more units here in this parcel, you have to get approval from the Planning Board, or the Zoning Board, special permit, how's that going to work?
Yes, that would likely be through the 40B process, through the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Would it be a special permit, or?
Yes, it would be, it would be called a comprehensive permit through the Zoning Board of Appeals, and that, that would be the process.
And then, Madam Chair, I just wanted to offer this suggestion, and this is, this will have been the first time that the public has seen this particular proposal and the plan, and heard what the potential for the number of units, which was one of the questions that Ms. Gibbs asked at the beginning. I wonder if we might want, and I think there, that one of the abutters, who has communicated to us, is, is also on this, on this Team Microsoft meeting. I just wonder if there might be some interest on the part of the Board for allowing some public comment on this, on this matter, because we are considering possibly sending this to town meeting.
Okay. Anybody, any feedback from anybody? Anybody, any feedback from anybody else? I'm fine with it if, if you want to go forward. Just a.
It's okay with me, Madam Chair.
It's okay with me, Madam Chair. We're good.
Okay. All right. So we're going to go through questions and comments from the, from the Affordable Housing Trustees first and foremost, and then I'll put it out to the public for any questions, additional questions or comments. So I think Peter had his hand up. Thank you, Dean. Peter had his hand up. Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Could you put that back on just, just to have it up there on the screen?
Yeah, I don't know what just happened here.
Yeah, just, I, I think, you know, we should take just a step back. I'll try to be very short about this. For people to understand what we're doing here, you know, this, this started with our, this to board two and a half years ago, and we kind of had waylaid, you know, and with COVID came around. But if you notice with all of the warrant articles that we're putting here, we're trying to take a comprehensive look at what we need to do in the town for affordable and attainable housing. And, and I won't go through the need. I mean, we've heard it, there's a, it's almost a crisis when you think about it, and it's a crisis across the, across the Cape. We're, we have an affordable trust that allows us to use that money for affordable housing up to 100% AMI. Attainable housing isn't even on anybody, either the state or any of our quote bylaws. If you're, if you're, if you can't meet the affordable housing criteria for, for your mean income, then too bad for you. And our problem is not just the 300, you know, to have a house that we can give to affordable homes, for, for people that need affordable homes, and we have some affordable housing. And granted, I would bet the housing director would, Housing Authority Director would say, say that they're not enough, and it's probably true. But we really don't have any way to get to attainable housing. So we're trying to put a trust in that would take care of that. And we're also trying to find funding that over the long term, we would be able to, to provide for a greater supply of affordable and attainable housing. And if we're going to do it in appropriate places and what properties are available, obviously property is expensive. If someone wants to donate it to us, we should, we accept it, but that's expensive. So we need a funding source. That's, that's just a top level view. That's why we have all these, these warrant articles. And I think it's important for people to understand that. And it's also important to understand that if you're going to do affordable housing, we're not going to be the builder. We're going to have, if we have property that's zoned from municipal, and we have property that we can use, there's a number of companies, organizations, consultants that, that do this, and they do it very well. But we're not going to get anything from them until we have the property and it's, and it's zoned, you know, municipal. So that's kind of like an overview. On this piece of property, I remember there's some long discussion about it. It's a, it's a, it's a rectangular property with a, with a building in the front, and like we said, we probably could resource that building. I would lean towards going 100% affordable on this, because we have other places where we could put attainable housing, just to start with, you know, and, and you need to have a, a combination of both the affordable and, and the attainable, because we can't use affordable housing for attainable. But I think this is more of a place for affordable housing, but I'd be willing to go to 75%. I hate to get a negotiating position, but I, I think we should think about whether or not we should be all affordable here, because there are other opportunities that could happen around this area. And, and this wouldn't be the first place I'd want to build necessarily. That's just me. But that's, that's all I have right now to say. Thank you, Madam Chair. I do approve of this.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just have to look up who's, okay. Jeff, I think you're up next. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'm in favor of the purchase. I have a question for Katie. Is the development percentage for affordable versus attainable dependent upon its direct percentage of funding source? Meaning if we go 50/50, then we're beholden to have 50% affordable and 50% attainable? And conversely, if it's 25/75, 25% affordable and 75% attainable, is that, does that translate correctly? Am I correct or not?
Through the chair, yes, that is corrected. That, that's what we've discussed with our housing consultant, the community engagement consultant, that that's, that's the formula that we should follow.
Okay. So I, I'm willing to divvy it up somehow. I don't know if it's 50/50 or 25/75, but I'd like to keep my, my options open, because we really don't know exactly what we're, we're going to do here in terms of what we're going to build, whether it's affordable or attainable. So I'd like to keep our options open. Very much in favor of its purchase, and I'm in favor of keeping options open. Whether it's 50/50 or 25/75, I kind of defer to House and Joe. Thanks.
All right. Cory?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very much in favor of this parcel. You know, someone who grew up in South Chatham, it's a wonderful part of the town. Very much think this is a great opportunity for us. I'm leaning more of a 50/50. I like to see both a mix of affordable and attainable housing. And if you look at the, I mean, it's a rectangle lot. There is some elevation changes on it, so if anyone who's been out there knows, it's not just a pure flat lot. But this is an opportunity to make a little bit of a, a little bit of a neighborhood. If you look at the aerial view right here, you're not going to want to put the amount of units that would be in conflict with the neighborhood. So I know we're going to get a professional consultant to come in to guide us, what is the best balance for that, for, for the parcel. But I'm looking for something that is, you know, some houses that are mixed, affordable and attainable, in balance with the neighborhood, that would kind of blend in and would really serve the, the community for the needs that we clearly have. But I think it's a good place to kind of develop that site, but being respectful to do, to the neighborhood. And I think we have a great opportunity to do that. So very much in favor of moving forward on this parcel, developing it maybe sooner than later. It's not, might be my first parcel I jump on, but it's near the top, to be honest with you.
Okay. We have staff that wants to speak again before we go down the list, so they might have some additional information to weigh in on. First Ally and then Katie, and then we'll go back to the public.
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly clarify, when Katie was talking the number of bedrooms, that is the number of bedrooms, not the number of units that could be on the property through our septic or IA system. So a unit could have two or three bedrooms or one, so it really is depending. So it's not 15 units overall. Granted, as Katie was saying, if you did, if we did bring sewer here and hook up, we could have more units. But I just wanted to clarify that that number was bedrooms, not units.
Okay, thank you, Ally.
Thanks.
Katie? Did you want to add something?
Yes, thank you. I also just wanted to add that one of, we also requested funds through the Community Preservation Committee for feasibility studies for parcels that we may be interested in obtaining or, or town-owned parcels. And so I believe that there will be a recommendation at town meeting for the feasibility study funding that we have requested. And so again, as part of the housing and community engagement process, we will be conducting a feasibility study to go along with that. And so it will give us a lot more information on the parcels and what's the most, most appropriate to be built.
Great, thank you. All right. Thanks. David Farrell. David, welcome. I think you're muted, David, if you want to unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. You can hire a consultant to conduct a study as to the number of houses that could properly be put into this unit, and you can very easily look at the abutting land and see that there's open undeveloped land in several spots abutting this property, which is the point that I made to you, that it's, it's a shame. I, I appreciate the need for, for housing. You've got 19 acres just northeast of this on Middle Road, which you can use. I'm going to oppose this at town meeting. I think conservation use would be better. I'm willing to buy it myself at this point, not, not the whole thing, but I, and preserve it. I would never, I would never personally build on that, and I put some restrictive reasoning in it. You, it's, the point I made to you in my email was, down the bottom here on Coppel Cove Road, it's connected to the Marshes, and you come right up here, and all sorts of wildlife goes right through the Basset House property in the meadow, and right up here into the town forest. The twine field's right over here, and the town forest is over there. It's a major corridor. And we used to be very concerned about preserving open space in this town and trying not to have everything get built out. And we've, we've turned our back on that, and we're going to, we're going to have now affordable and attainable housing, and I appreciate that need, but there's already town-owned property, and there's developed property that can be used for that. And I will oppose this, and I certainly will oppose anything more than single units on, on the four lots. Every neighbor around there has a single building. It's R20. I've lived here for 30 years, and I would vehemently oppose any increase. I'm glad you hear the clarification that there's not a plan for 15 units. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Megan?
I just wanted to agree wholeheartedly with Cory's sentiment. I firmly support the purchase of the property for affordable and attainable housing. I do think that in this particular parcel, we should be looking at a 50/50 split, if at all possible. I agree that, you know, with what he was saying about it needs to fit the neighborhood, especially because of the Basset House, and because that is sort of the welcome to Chatham. You know, just when you just passed 137 there, I think that that's really when people start to feel that welcoming feeling, and I, I want it to look the part of the neighborhood and sort of have that same feel. If you can do that with solely affordable, then I think that's fine, but I just, I, I personally would prefer a mix here.
Thank you, Megan. Bruce?
My inclination is also for a 50/50 split. If it looks too difficult to get through that through town meeting, I would obviously go for a 100% affordable, which could be done with trust funds.
Okay.
That's it all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'm going to bring it back to the Board and see what they, Katie, any further information before we bring it back to the Board?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, hold on, I'm just trying to organize my stuff. All right. Yes, go ahead.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Market Channel 18. I just wanted to make you aware that I have lost my video feed. So I am hearing your audio, and it is being broadcast, but we're not seeing any of the video. Perhaps after you vote on this item, we could take a moment for me to try to regain that capability?
Okay. Let's see if we have the inclination at this moment to make a motion on this item. I mean, we're talking about accepting to, moving forward with the acquisition, and then in, in what manner of funding that we want to go, in what direction. So, does anybody have a motion at this time? I see Peter. Peter?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I wanted to make a, a comment first, and, and I understand what the abutter is concerned about, and, and I, you know, I could, I could relate to that. The only comment that I would make, that, that I would ask him to consider is that we haven't turned our back on conservation land. This board, what was it, a year and a half, within the last year and a half, has, has bought property and conservation land right along Oak Queen Anne Road. And that was a considerable amount of money and funding to do that. And if you take a look at the amount of conservation land that's here, and I understand, it's a beautiful piece of property for, for what he wants, but all around it are houses. So my comment is, I, I, I hear what some of the other people have said, and I would agree that you'd want to have, I think you'd want to have it so that it fits in the neighborhood. I would thinking affordable housing could do that, but it would certainly be easier to do that with attainable housing, because you're, there's, there could be a little difference. So that was, that was my comment.
You want to make a motion, Peter?
Okay, I'm, I'll make a motion to, to, hold on a second, to place this, this warrant on the, I requested to place and recommend this article on the 2020 Annual Town Meeting warrant with a 50/50 split between affordable and attainable housing.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can we do two separate actions? So one is under the trust, if the trust could vote the funding source for the acquisition, and then we can pivot over to the selectmen for the placement and the recommendation.
Okay. All right. So the trust, let's do, let's do the acquisition first, and then we'll do the funding source. So Peter, do you want to reiterate that as just taking out the funding source first?
Yeah, let's, I, I move that the trust approve acquisition of this property for, for affordable housing. Well, I.
Now, you're going to.
You have to delineate the cash versus the affordable housing trust.
Yeah.
Right, all right.
So 50/50.
Okay, do you want, you're doing, you want to do the trust first before you do the acquire, the selectmen acquiring the property?
Well, I'd rather, I think what, what Town Manager said is, you know, we go with the acquisition, and then we can discuss whether we want a 50/50 or 75/25 if the board decides. We had a difference.
All right. So do we, so the trust will vote the acquisition, and then the Board will place it on the warrant?
That's correct.
Okay, sorry. All right. So let's have, do we have a second on that?
Is this a motion to place? Is this what, is this a motion to place?
No, this is a motion to acquire.
To acquire by the Affordable Trust, by the Affordable Housing Trust.
Well, I think, doesn't the split need to be, doesn't the share that the trustees are being asked to contribute to this, shouldn't that be part of this motion?
I thought it should, Dean, yes.
Well.
Yes.
So I think we're back to.
Okay.
Okay, we're back to his original, I'm sorry. We're back to his original motion, sorry. All right, so it's.
Now I'll make it a 50/50 split.
Thank you. All right. And do we have a second on that?
Second, yep.
Okay. Any further discussion from the Board? All right, we see that Elaine Gibbs has her hand up.
Yes, this is just a point of clarification from Katie. So of my understanding, in terms of asking for local preference, she said we can request to it during the permitting process. So does that mean it has to pass a town meeting, we have to do all the design work, all the permits to build the structures, and only then we can get permission or preference for our, our people of our community? Is that, is that the point where we ask, and what are the odds we would get that preference?
Once, once a project is permitted through the ZBA, a 40B project would be permitted through the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's at that point in time we can begin the process to request local preference.
Okay. So in other words, we have to buy the property, we have to hire the consultants, we have to design all of the buildings, and then go to the ZBA for approval, and then we can get requested. So in other words, it's a done deal, and we won't know until we're that far down the road whether or not we're going to get preferential treatment for the people in our town. It's up to the state.
That, that is correct. I mean, they're, they have the process in place so that it, you know, because they're, they're trying to encourage, you know, obviously trying to encourage affordable housing. I do, I just saw that Pat had his hand up, and I'm not sure if he could.
Pat, can you weigh in on this, please?
Sure. Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. The, I think the easiest way to look at the housing preference or housing priority situation is to consider it in both a micro and a macro level. On, on a micro level, as Katie noted, any individual housing project is going to be subject to certain rules, regulations, requirements, based on what DHCD imposes on that project, what the subsidizing agency's requirements are, and the program under which the particular project is built or funded. That micro process, that micro analysis. analysis will allow housing preferences and priorities only to the extent the particular program or the particular subsidizing agency allows the preferences to be allowed. Now, on a, on a macro level, the, the real, the, the struggle, if you will, between local housing preferences and discriminatory impacts in housing is vested in both federal and state law generally. The local selection preferences cannot disproportionately delay or otherwise deny admission of non-local residents that are protected for housing purposes under state and federal law. So we would have to look at each project individually, but not only under the micro standards that are going to apply to the particular program guidelines, but also on a macro level to determine whether or not our housing preferences as set forth, as established in the housing plan would in fact have some discriminatory impact on a state or federal level. Now, in any case, before we'd be able to qualify for local housing preferences, we would have to have studies done that would establish what the demographic circumstances are in Chatham, what the need for local residences are with respect to local housing. And those particular criteria will be then vetted by the Commonwealth, by DHCD, and for the most part, to determine what level of local preference or priority we can impose. So it's, it's, it's a difficult question to give a black and white answer to as to what level of local preference would be allowed. We really are going to have to have the studies done. We're going to have to look at the demographic conditions within the town and we're going to have to look at the particular circumstances relating to each project that's going to come down the pike in order to determine what preferences are.
Okay. Ally, did you want to weigh in and add something to that? Your hand was up.
Yes, just very quickly, thank you. I just also want to give, you know, an example that, you know, obviously we believe that local preference is important, but we do have to understand as well that, you know, there are Chatham residents, generational families that did have to move out of Chatham to other locales on the Cape or in Massachusetts and they might want to come back. As an example, we just had an MCI property two years ago and this family lived in Barnstable and they wanted to move back and they could do that by going into the MCI property. And they came back to Chatham. And so I just want people to kind of take again that macro look and say, okay, these generational families had to move out of Chatham, now they have the ability to be able to move back. So I just wanted to put that to the board as well.
Thank you, Ally. Could you do me a favor, Ally, and stop sharing the screen? We're, we had a request from Channel 18.
Of course.
I, I don't know if it'll help whatever we're dealing with. Okay, Dean's had his hand up. And then Jeff, Dean?
Yeah, I, I had a question for Pat on this topic. So Pat, if, if, if the home rule petition for the creation of the Chatham Housing Trust were to be enacted by the legislature and signed by the governor, and the language in Section 6 and 6A says, lays out this local preference, it says to the maximum extent allowed by law. Do I read that to mean that if this were to be enacted, that the, the approval scheme that you articulated a few minutes ago would still govern? Or does this, would this overrule that?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, Dean, I think that'd have to be taken in conjunction with one another. The reason that, to the extent allowed by law clause was added to the special legislation is because as noted, the, the level of local preference or priority that would be permitted may vary from project to project or from circumstance to circumstance. And what the special act will do, i- it does emphasize the fact that we want to allow local preference to the greatest extent possible. And quite frankly, that is to the maximum extent allowed by law. So it would vary, but I don't think that one body of law, whether it's federal estate, housing law, or the special act would, would supersede or annul the other. They'd be writ together.
Thank you.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, I just had a, I guess a question, a comment, a little of both. When we go to do our due diligence, would we not have the strongest argument of almost any community, maybe perhaps other than Orleans, on the need, demographically I should say, for the need for affordable and attainable housing, given the age of our demographic and the lack of young people in town? Would we not have a very strong argument? I said, I, I would think we'd have a very strong argument. And, and I have a question for Pat. Do all the other, the other towns like in Orleans face the same hurdle?
I'll be happy to tackle that first. I, I do think that every community has to look at its particular circumstances and that's why one of the guidelines that DHCD imposes is a strict requirement that we have appropriate studies done upfront so that we have the demographic data and other information necessary to justify the level of housing preferences that we seek to impose. And I, and I do think you're correct, Jeff. I, I think that not only because of the, the age of the demographic in, in Chatham, the, you know, the, the level of income is, is certainly a very relevant indicator as well in terms of housing preference and priorities. We'd have to look at varying, we can't oftentimes focus however solely on, on the inter-town statistics. We have to look at regional statistics because many of the state programs and federal programs to that matter do utilize the regional, you know, data as the basis to determining to what extent they allow local preferences. But I, I do think that Chatham can make a compelling case, but it will have to be backed up with hard data.
And every other town faces the same hurdles?
Each town that seeks to impose preferences has to justify those preferences based on its circumstances, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, so any other questions before we go to a vote of the Affordable Housing Trust? Do you want to read back the motion? Shawna, is that possible before we, just to be clear? Or somebody, maybe?
Sorry, yes. The motion was to acquire the property at 2337 Main Street and Zero Jordan's Trail with a 50/50 split of affordable housing and free cash.
Thank you. Okay, let's take a vote of the Affordable Housing Trustees. Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Peter? Can you run mute, Peter?
Yes, aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chair says aye, okay. Jill, do we need to, I'll leave the meeting and come back in? Are we still having a huge bug?
Yeah, so just so the board knows, what's being broadcast on Channel 18 right now is just our audio and then there's a sidebar who the participants are. No one's seen faces or the presentation. So Mark, it's on his computer, he has to log out. So Mark, do we stay in or do we need to rejoin as well?
I believe that if you are all experiencing good performance with teams, you should stay in the meeting. I think I'm the only one with the issue.
Okay, so Mark, you'll let us know when you're back in and we can proceed?
Yep, give me about 60 seconds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. You know, some sort of music.
Okay, he's back.
Perfect, all right.
Need to make sure he's recording.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Are you recording there, Mark? Are you okay?
Yes, we're all good on my end. I appreciate your indulgence.
No, thank you very much. You're the tech guys. All right, our next move will be to place this on the warrant, correct? Okay, and this is a vote of the Board of Selectmen. So I need a motion?
All right, Madam Chair, I, I moved that the board placed 2337 Main Street and Zero's Jordan's Trail on, on, on the, the 2020 annual town meeting warrant.
Okay, and do you include the funding?
Yeah, included that 50/50 split between affordable and, and free cash.
Okay, there's a second?
Second.
Okay, I see Dean's hands up. Dean?
No, I, I was going to ask if there'd be any discussion on when we get to the recommendation. That's fine, I have no comment on this.
Okay, no comments. We'll have a recommendation, we can have a discussion then. Dean, all right, let's take a vote. Cory?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Vote to recommend, motion to recommend, please.
Okay, Madam Chair, I, I moved that the board recommend, recommend 2337 Main Street and Zero, Zero Jordan's Trail at a 50/50 split between free cash and affordable housing and, and trust fund. That's it.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, and further discussion, Dean?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, because I didn't articulate at the beginning of the, of the discussion on this item, that I, I favor the, the acquisition and I'm in full agreement with what, also with what Cory had said about designing an array of residences that would be compatible with the neighborhood. And if we have 15 bedrooms that could be permitted, you could see that reduced to a relatively small number of homes if you went to the full 15 to address the concerns that had been expressed by Mr. Farrell, I think. And I would also just add to what, what Peter had said in terms of the support the board had made for, the board and the town have, have made for the acquisition of conservation of properties. You know, I was on the finance committee when we acquired the Twine Fields, which is nearby, and that was referenced earlier. And I remember I was on the finance committee when we, the town meeting successfully defeated the, the sale of a property on Depot Street, the Grange property. So there, there've been various properties. I think we have worked on that with the Land Bank Open Space Committee. Now the Open Space Committee has done a good job with that. So I, I don't think we've been derelict in that regard. Maybe there's more we can do, we can always do more, but, but I just really wanted to get those points across. Thank you, Madam Chair, but I will support this recommendation.
Okay, so we'll take a vote. Thank you, Dean. If there's no other comment. Okay, Peter?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Chair says aye. All right, check that one off the list and that on the scorecard as is. All right, Katie or Ally, I'm not sure who's making this presentation, but it's the, to declare the 19-plus acres of town-owned parcel of land on north of Middle Road as surplus and designate for the affordable and attainable houses, and, and designate for affordable and attainable house purposes. And that's in our attachment B. So, Katie?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I think Ally is going to just, if it's okay, share her screen again just for the public's knowledge about the area that we are talking about. But the board has discussed this publicly in the past, so I, I'm not sure how much detail I'll need to go into, but the idea is that we would dedicate this 19-acre parcel north of Middle Road for affordable and attainable housing purposes. The board had voted to do, to declare the property surplus on February 16th and had directed staff to prepare a corresponding warrant article. And so that is what is before you tonight. If you'd like to, me to go into more detail, I can, or just happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll start with some questions or a motion. Dean?
Madam Chair, I think we've discussed this in open session. I, I will move to place this article on the warrant. I, I just would, I know the draft explanation needs to be placed with something. This is the explanation for the prior article. And I would just say in passing with respect to the prior article, I neglected to say it, perhaps the explanation for the prior article should include the full purchase price for the information of voters. But anyway, I, I moved to place this on, on the warrant.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second, Peter.
Okay. Further discussion, Peter's hands up. Dean was hands, was up. Is it still up, Dean, or?
No, not meant to be, okay.
Okay, Peter and then Cory.
Just the only thing I'd make a comment about is Katie could just re, restate for us, how much of this parcel, the 19 acres, would we be able to use for housing and how much would be left over for, for open space?
If, if I could, I may ask Ally to jump in on that. I think that there were two smaller parcels within that area because we wanted to leave decent buffer as well as avoid the wetlands in the area. So Ally is able to share her screen here with the two different options, or the two, two areas of options.
Okay, can everyone see that?
Yes, Ally.
Okay, great. So again, I'll just quickly go through, this is the overall Middle Road parcel and there is potentially two options that we could go forward with, or we could pick either option or go forward with both. But option one and option two, and I have them in more detail. So option one, that was approximately 9.5 acres and that is in this red, I'm sorry, the total area here was 9.5 acres, but the area of development is approximately three acres and that is inclusive of this red line here. We also did show the wetlands here, which we obviously will, you know, be outside of that for development. And we did include this buffer here because the topography is very steep. So we wanted to make sure we did not develop in that location either. And again, this is just the topography that shows that. And then this was option two. So the development potential area is about 5.2 acres and again, that's in this red lined area. We did include where the wetlands are located here because we do not obviously want to develop within those. And we did include just potential setback buffers from the residents that are nearby. And again, this shows the topography and the wetlands in more detail.
Great.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ally. Cory, your hands up?
Yes, thank you. I'm, I'm going to support this declaration. I, I have no issue with moving this forward. I just wanted to just make a quick, quick statement. The other day I was approached at the transfer station by one of our residents and there may be a concern from some of the neighborhood or a neighbor or neighborhood individuals about some of the details for this, for this project. So I would just encourage anyone who has any questions or concerns to, to reach out to staff or the board to either clarify or answer any concerns or questions they may have. But I, I, I will support this, I do support it. But I just want to make sure that our residents are aware of what we're doing and if there's questions, we are happy to try to answer them. So that, that is still very much part of the process. So thank you.
Great, Cory. Peter, your hands up again, or was that up from another?
No, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, just a quick point on, on this. Attainable and affordable housing, it's a very good location for that. I may have misspoken before when I talked about affordable and attainable housing. They're not going to look any different. They're going to be, they're, they're in effect the same. Whatever we put in there is going to fit the neighborhood. And my, my issue had been how much funding each one would have and what the attainable housing, you know, we'd have to spend our free cash from that. I may not have said it properly, but the point is that in all of these places with affordable, attainable housing, we're in an area that's going to be appropriate. We're going to put up what's appropriate to the neighborhood. We're going to obviously do that and it's going to be appropriate for, and it'll be a wonderful place for people to live. So that's, thank you.
All right, do we, Jeff?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Quick comment. I just think I'm very much in favor of this.
designation declaration, I should say. And I think that the piece of the property that's tucked into the woods there is a gorgeous piece of property. It really is cool. Anyway, I'm excited about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any further from the staff on this project?
Madam Chair, just, I can't, just to speak to Selectman DeCastro's comment, I, we did revise the explanation already. If the board would like us, you know, I can certainly read through it, but if you're comfortable, we can just place it on the revised draft warrant article.
Yeah, we received an email with it. Katie, is that this afternoon?
Yes, I hit it.
Okay, so we'll move to a motion.
I think we have a motion on the table.
We do. I'm sorry. We do. Okay. And we had a second already. So let's go for a vote. All right, Dean?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
The chair says aye. All right. Yep, go ahead.
I move that we recommend the approval of this article to town meeting, and I do have a comment when you entertain discussion on this motion.
Sure. And a second?
Second.
Okay, Dean, go ahead. Comment.
Just wanted to add, sort of along the same lines of what Corey was saying, I received a communication this week from the chair, the president of the Chatham Conservation Foundation, which is a direct abutter to the east, and they were obviously concerned and interested in knowing what kind of buffer might be accommodated there. As this process goes forward, I did refer them to our town staff and encourage them to stay, stay. So that's something I think we want to keep in mind as we go forward with this.
Yeah, and I mean, we're going to be doing community forums on these particular properties. There's going to be a great opportunity for folks to be able to weigh in. So, so, so the process will be inclusive. All right. Okay. Did we take a vote? I'm sorry. We didn't take a vote. Okay, let's take a vote. Dean?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay, voted and placed. All right, Katie, next.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. So the next article for review is a special legislation home rule petition for an act establishing a housing trust fund in the town of Chatham to create the Chatham Housing Trust, which will be one trust tasked with the creation of both affordable and attainable housing up to 200% area median income. And the board and the trust have discussed this in the past. Again, happy to go into more detail or here to answer any questions.
Okay. All right. So we know that this was, came out of what we saw as a situation where, you know, we, we need, we just don't need affordable housing. We need the attainable workforce housing and an ability to fund it. It's an important piece to a working vibrant community to have both affordable and attainable housing. So this is what we thought was a good solution in helping with the funding. Dean, your hand is up.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I had a couple of questions or edits for town council. So Pat, on page, on the fourth page, Roman numeral 13, in the parenthesis, it says comprise, these are the powers of the trustees, comprise, attribute, defend, enforce, is comprised the correct word, or should it be compromise? Was that a typo, or am I missing something?
Pat? Did we lose him?
Sorry, no, I'm here. I'm finding the language. That word was set forth in the draft act upon which this was based, Dean. And quite frankly, I don't know whether compromise would would fit in there any more nicely than comprised does. I believe it's intended to be comprised.
Okay, I just don't know how you comprise a claim. That's all right. Down in the bottom of that same page, where in paragraph G, it exempts certain contracts for 30B, which is the procurement statute, and it refers to authorities. So does that, that mean, does that include the Chatham Housing Authority so that if we have a contract and arrangement with the Chatham Housing Authority, that would be exempted from that public procurement statute?
Yes, it would.
Okay. And then the last question is on, in section six and section six A on the municipal employees, would it be best to clarify that those, those are municipal employees of the town of Chatham, or is it understood?
I believe it's understood, but if you want to be more particular about it, by all means, we could, we could clarify it in that regard.
I guess I would suggest putting that in there because I know we're interested in local preference. But other than that, I'm supportive of this particular draft legislation.
Thank you. Everybody good with Dean's recommendation?
Yes.
And preferences? Yeah. All right.
Offer a motion to place.
Sure. Motion to place the second?
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote. Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Vote, motion to recommend.
So moved.
Second. All right, moving along. Corey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And chair says aye. Okay, great. All right, our next is, next up is, just want to make sure I'm still on the same page. The CPA funds for affordable and attainable housing up to 200% area mean income, or as they say, AMI. I know Select Board Member DeCastro brought this up as a possible funding opportunity for affordable and attainable housing. We already know that CPA does fund the affordable side. This is in addition to that. Katie, did you want to make a presentation on this, or make any comments, and then we'll turn it over to Dean?
Just, thank you, Madam Chair. Just the same introduction. The board has discussed this in the past and asked staff to prepare a corresponding warrant article. So this would be an act facilitating the appropriation and expenditure of community preservation funds for community housing purposes in the town of Chatham. So again, turn it over to Select Board Member DeCastro for further comments.
Dean?
Yeah, thank you. No lengthy comment here because we have discussed this on a couple of occasions. The intent here is, and I think that our own CPC committee, especially in recent times, has been very conscious of pumping more funds into housing as they've recommended a million dollars for the trust this year. But this is an effort to update the definitional portion of the CPC statute for the town of Chatham. It's not a new tax or anything. It just allows us to recognize that attainability is as important today as affordability, and we'd like to be able to use some of these funds for that purpose as well. So with that in mind, I'll move to place this on the warrant.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion, Peter?
Just a quick comment. I agree wholeheartedly with what Dean said. And I think it's important, even though we've heard that this is going to be a hard push and we're not sure whether or not something will happen, it brings to mind and brings to the forefront the whole issue of attainable housing, like we said before. And that's, that's very critical, I think, for not only Chatham, but for a lot of the Cape. So I vote for it.
Okay, we had the second. Any further discussion? None? All right, let's take a vote. Dean?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Chair says aye. All right, vote to recommend.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, let's, any further discussion? Let's take a vote then. Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay, check that one off. And the next is the home rule petition. It is a real estate transfer fee for affordable and or attainable housing. Again, we're going to allow public comment for this. And I will turn it over to Katie and then over to Jeff, and I'm sure we'll have some discussion with town council on this. Katie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, this subject has been discussed in previous board meetings. So this home rule petition would be an act establishing a real property transfer fee in the town of Chatham. And again, it's been discussed, the board had asked staff to prepare a corresponding warrant article, which we've done for the board's review. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but I believe Selectman DeCastro had introduced the article, so I'll let him take it. I suppose.
So Jeff, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Katie. Once again, for your consideration, Select Board, the transfer fee, I'd like to call it an investment in affordable and attainable housing here in the town of Chatham. We're investing in for the future of our housing inventory. The fee, I want to, this home rule petition has been modified in this version to make it very clear that this is not a burden upon the seller of real estate, but is on the purchaser of real estate in the town of Chatham. So as constructed, purchaser who buys a home $2 million or north of $2 million would pay one-half of 1%, 50 basis points, not a percent, not 5%, but one-half of 1%, 50 basis points of the purchase price. Now, we'll go into the treasurer's office, into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to assist us in financing our efforts to increase the inventory of affordable and attainable housing in Chatham. This is not a regressive tax. It's not an assessment. There's been some confusion out there. We are not increasing property taxes. I'm not proposing. And should you support this? We're not proposing to increase property taxes or have an assessment on expensive homes that are assessed north. This is a fee on the transfer by the purchaser of real estate. The purchaser would pay this fee. There are many exemptions in this home rule petition. Some have reminded me that there are a lot, I believe, that they're, they're appropriate to address potential issues with folks that may or may not want to pay this in, or those folks that should, that describes exactly who should be paying for. So I guess I'll leave there. I just want to be really clear. This is a fee that will be paid by the purchaser of real estate. It's a home rule petition that needs to be, number one, placed and recommended by the Select Board. It needs to be approved by town meeting. Then it needs to go to the legislature where it needs to be approved as well before it becomes a home rule petition. That may be a tall order, as other towns in the Cape, most notably Provincetown and Nantucket, have very similar home rule petitions in the legislature now that have not been acted upon. And Pat might be able to shed some more light here, but it's, they're not acted upon for a host of reasons. But I think it's important that the town of Chatham get in line, along with Provincetown and Nantucket and others who have seen real estate values skyrocket and have put the ability of our local residents that make, you know, 100% or even 200% of AMI, put affordable housing houses, the market for houses, out of reach of our local, our local residents. And this will provide corpus and principle, right now as it's written, for 10 years, to provide funds for our affordable and attainable housing without relying on the largesse of CPA or the largesse of developers who donate every once in a while into this fund. So I'll stop there.
Okay.
It's a potential answer to our funding issues going forward. It's a mechanism that should not prove onerous to local residents.
Okay. Thanks. Jeff, I want to reiterate, I know that we, the local press had identified this as a mansion tax.
It is not.
And, and it is not a tax, and it's not, it's not meant to be a tax. And so going forward, I really think we should recognize it for what it is and identify it as a fee. And I think that, you know, if we start to call it what it is, then it's, it's, it has a better understanding. So from now on, I'm going to refer to it, and I hope it catches on, as a community housing fee. And going forward, we recognize it as a transfer fee, a real estate transfer fee. But this is a community housing fee. And if you think of it in that terms, you're, it's, there is an understanding that this is an investment in the future for Chatham. So Peter, do you have anything to say about the community housing fee?
Yeah, Madam Chair. Let me, let me start off with something I've said previously. You know, generally, I oppose these transfer taxes because this is more of a fee. And I agree with you. I'm gonna, I'd like to take time to go through, and it doesn't take me three or four minutes. I'm going to go through the reasons why I support this specially-designed home rule petition, when before I opposed transfer fees. And, and I noticed we got a letter, an email from, from the real estate, part of the real estate group that came in opposing it. And, and I'd like, you know, the public to weigh in on what I said because it, to me, I'd like to hear what they have to say. But this, this is the reason why I feel, you know, that I support it. You know, if you, I'll start off simply, you know, we have, we have owners, and, and they see the value of their high-end property skyrocket. And not because of their accomplishments in a way, but due to what, you know, the economists call an increasing inefficient, and I would say skewed, housing market. It's not unreasonable then, in a general sense, to ask for the capture of a small one-half percent of this substantial, of the substantial deals that are made, and dedicate them to, to, you know, our severe local housing imbalances, you know, enabled by these transitions. Let me go, transactions, let me go through a little more. Here's some of the, the issues that are brought up on, on the transfer issue. And, and, you know, rightfully so, the, the real estate associations have generally not supported transfer, and they refer to them as transfer taxes because of a number of reasons. And I think this addresses some of those. But the major point that's being, that always is brought up, is that transfer, transfer funds are regressive. The fees are regressive. That means the burden is higher on our lower-income families and will make housing less affordable in an already unaffordable market. Well, this fee is applied only to the buyers on the high end of the market, right, and market properties. There's no impact to the lower cost properties. Somebody's going to draw a connection there, but indirectly there isn't. Besides, what it does, it provides us an ability to fund and develop a larger supply of affordable housing. That's what we need. We can't just buy one in two houses at a time. The second issue that they bring up is higher transfer fees may discourage property sales. You know, you wonder about that. Purchasing a home already, you know, if you look at it, involves considerable transaction fees. First of all, real estate agents take a large percentage, somewhere between 5% and 6%, closing costs and so forth. An additional half a percent of fee at the highest end of the market, again, you expect it to shift the behavior? I don't think so in the narrowest of circumstances. We're talking properties, if you're going to buy two and $3 million homes, you know, you'd need to have the resources to do that. Another issue that's made up is transfer fees are arbitrary, and they discriminate because it's assessed against one type of asset and a narrow base of the population. There's a certain amount of truth to that. But all taxes, when you look at them, have advantages and disadvantages. This is not perfect. This transfer fee does avoid, though, generalized taxes like property and sales tax, and those are regressive. And we need funds for the crisis that we're in. It provides an effective, and I would contend, a more equitable solution to our immediate housing needs. Again, you know, the enabling, the enabling cause of the housing crisis, which is the high cost of, of, of the disparity between housing that's available at millions of dollars and those that are, that are not, you know, taking the funds there helps with the solution. And by the way, this does sunset after 10 years, so it's not continuing forever. There's a, there's a comment that says, okay, let's just better, it's better to reduce costs than to add more taxes. And I generally agree. I would rather cut costs. Now, if you look at the way our budget has been over the last three years, you know, our operating budget, and I believe maintains an efficient balance of funding of what we have as a service-based requirements, and COVID-19 changed that somewhat, and future high priority challenges while retaining our AAA body. Our, our future challenges, priority challenges are not simple. We're talking We're talking about affordable housing. We're talking about our senior population. We're talking about coastal resiliency. We're talking about our infrastructure. We can't fund this all at once, but we prioritize them where they're gonna go. What does that say to us, though? Sizable and yearly set-asides into some, like, free cash and always going after a large CPA, our CPA funds, a large percentage of those funds to request for housing really ignores the, the cause of the problem, and that's an inefficient and inequitable housing market. And if we're gonna, if we're gonna do that, we're gonna have more recessive tax. So I believe, you know, and I want to hear the argument, the benefits of this transfer fee for critically needed low and middle-income housing, I believe that far exceed the cost to the buyers of high-end properties. Yes, someone's gonna pay a little bit more, but it, the common good is gonna be taking, is better cared for here. And given the real threat that we have, I believe, to the health of our economy in the long run and the very, very, very character of Chatham. I mean, you know, we'll become, I think, as, as Dean has mentioned, if we continue on this road, we'll become a museum. And that is not a town. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Peter. I'm gonna, I'll go to the selectmen, and then I know there's some people from the public that have, their hands raised. Please bear with me as we let the selectmen speak first, and then, then I'll call on the public. So Cory, you wanna go ahead?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, no, I want to thank Jeff for bringing this forward for discussion. You know, it's an important topic. The, the goal of this is extremely important, but I have a couple thoughts. First of all, this is a discussion that needs to be voted up or down by the voters. So I'm gonna support a version of this going to town meeting to be reviewed and discussed and voted upon. I am not gonna support this version on two different levels. One is, when I was on the OPEB trust not too long ago, we kind of discussed a similar version of this model for another funding mechanism. And there was a section for, like, interfamilial transfers and certain exemptions that were in place. And I think those exemptions in the OPEB version versus what is in this particular version are, the OPEB ones were more palatable, I think, to the voters for some of the families who have, you know, paid taxes in one generation after another generation, and in this 10-year, you know, window, how those fees get paid out. I think that is a flaw in this particular version. But aside from that, I do have a concern that, that if we do pass this, that we're gonna create an inventory that doesn't have these fees, lower threshold property. And I think that might be counterproductive to some of the goals we're moving forward with affordable and attainable housing. So I do think the, the initial thrust for this is pure, and, but I think it's an unforeseen consequence that I'm reluctant to, to, to move this particular version forward. I think it still needs some polishing, even if without some of the, the fine tuning, I would be very concerned about these unforeseen consequences. I hate to use that term, but I am concerned that, you know, we're gonna create this inventory of lower houses that is not gonna be put to use for the individuals that were, we want to have, use them. So those are my thoughts. You know, I, I think it's up to the voters, you know, when the day is, when it's the end of the day here, but I don't think it's just quite ready. Thank you.
Cory, do you have any recommendations on the language change at all, or, or what particular part of it that is troublesome to you?
I don't have the actual language in front of me, but there were some, several exemptions that were in the version we brought forth with, for OPEB funding that had, like, full exemptions for inter-family transfers. How I read this now is if a family member were to sell to another family member basically at market value, they would be subject to this fee. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, and I think that's very different than the OPEB version we discussed, and I don't know what the community's feeling would be on that. So that is some, that's an area I would like to reconsider, but that's my, that's one of my opinion here.
So you, so just if I might throw you the chair, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
So Cory, would you would just exempt all interfamilial transfers?
Yes.
Okay.
I would stay more in line with the language we use for the OPEB.
Yeah, I don't have that in front of me, Cory.
Neither do I, but I, I mean, philosophically, I think, again, I still have the concerns about creating an inventory. Counterproductive, but for those people who want to support it, I do think that particular element would be more palatable for those who want to support it, so.
All right. Dean?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I, thank you. I, I do have that language, and I'm gonna mention, refer to that.
Okay.
Oh, good.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I do want to compliment Jeff for, for bringing this idea forward. And I, I agree with Cory. I think it should go to town meeting for their consideration, and I'll support a motion to place, but I'm not gonna support a motion to recommend. And I don't want to be disingenuous. My fundamental opposition to this is philosophical. I do not believe in earmarked fees or taxes, and we can call this a fee, but to me, it's a tax. The OPEB legislation was, was characterized as an excise tax. That's the term used there. But whatever you want to call it, I, I just am philosophically opposed to it. There are a number of concerns or flaws in, in the draft. This is the Nantucket model. I don't think it's a terribly well-crafted model, and I'll just tick off a few. Cory mentioned the interfamilial transfers. This is the language in the, in the OPEB piece, and I'll just extract from it. It says that, that the, the tax there does not apply to any deed or instrument or writing whereby an interest in realty is sold, granted, assigned, transferred, or conveyed to a parent, spouse, child, or sibling of the person making the deed. So there's no limitation there. It's an absolute exemption. It's not limited to, to transfers that are less than a full, full value consideration. Let me just mention a couple of other things. This is not meant to be exclusive, and I'm not gonna dwell on them, but there's language in Section 2 that says that the register of deeds will not record any document except a mortgage to which there's no certificate attached. It's not clear to me, and that's the certificate that the purchaser has paid the fee. It's not clear to me that that doesn't apply to circumstances where the purchase price is for less than full value, which is supposed to be exempted from the statute. Then there's a provision that says that the treasurer shall deposit the fees in the Chatham Housing Trust Fund or the Chatham Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That contemplates the passage of the legislation that we just endorsed in the prior article, but it doesn't specify any standard for the treasurer to determine how much to put in one fund or the other. I, it's kind of open-ended. I'm not sure why it is that way. Then there is a provision for, I also think, I mentioned this when this was, when this was first brought up. This applies to any, any transaction in, that is $2 million or more, and there's, there's no exemption for the first $2 million or any portion of that, unlike the OPEB legislation, which exempted the first $450,000. But I'm concerned that as property values continue to rise, which I think they will, this $2 million may impact more people that we don't intend to impact, and I think there should be a self-adjusting formula to, to accommodate the increasing value so that the $2 million threshold rises. Then it, there's a provision for challenging the fee and that, that the town is required to grant a hearing, but it doesn't specify who in the town is supposed to hold the hearing. And, and then two final points. There's a provision that obligates the legal representative of, of an applicant who is looking for an exemption to, for liability to pay the fee. I'm not sure what that means, whether the legal representative means perhaps the executor of an estate or the personal representative, as the statute now reads, or whether that, that's the person's legal counsel. And I don't know why a legal counselor should be obligated if that's the intent. And, and two final points. It's, this has to do with the longevity of this, of this fee. It has a 10-year duration, but it can be increased or decreased, and the transfer, and the threshold can be revised by a two-thirds vote of town meeting. So it, it can be adjusted during that period of time. It doesn't necessarily have to stay at 2 million. It could be reduced to 1.5 million, or it could go up. But it requires a two-thirds vote. I know this was discussed the last time, how we talked about this proposal. It, it's, it takes two-thirds of town meeting to vote it, to vote it out, but it's only a simple majority this June to vote it in if this is what we want to do. So I, I just think there should be some symmetry there, but, and there are other, you know, drafting considerations that, that should be addressed, but I don't want, again, I don't want to be disingenuous. If each and every one of these concerns were addressed, to my personal satisfaction, I would still oppose this.
Got it.
Because I just don't concept. But I, I respect what everybody has said. I understand what you want to do, and, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Jeff?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. So given the recalcitrance expressed by Cory and Dean is exactly why I wanted to have this hearing, is I changed the seller's language to purchaser's, and, and I heard, I heard, you know, that, that folks had some misgivings. Now, Dean, I understand where you're coming from philosophically, and I don't blame you one iota. I, I, I understand that. But I do think that, I do think that the select board conceptually thinks this is a good idea, and we ought to give ourselves another crack at the nut, if you will, to monitor that Cory's interfamilial transfers are addressed and other issues that Dean has respectfully raised and rightfully raised are addressed before we bring it to town. So I'm, I'm more than willing to do that, and I'm more than willing to, to recraft this, bring it back with the board at another time, and, and address, address issues that are of concern. Because I do think it's important for town meeting to approve this and to bring it forward to the legislature and at least get on record with the state that Chatham is in, in, in line with Nantucket and P-Town, that we have an issue here, and this, this will say that we have an issue here in how we fund affordable housing. We'd like to address it because we're all facing the same issue in these seaside resort towns that have priced themselves out of affordable and attainable housing. So our local residents can't afford to live here. But if we have a, an ongoing funding source so that we can provide more options for folks to live here, then I think we've done a lot, a lot of good for our community and to develop community housing. So I'm more than willing not to recommend to place this, I'm more than willing to bring it back, and I would hope that you would support me in that endeavor. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So we're considering a rewrite, but I really want to hear from the community because the input would be helpful. Peter's got his hand up next, Peter, and then we'll turn it over to the community unless the board has anything else to say.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. No, I, I was gonna say, let's go ahead with the, the public input, and, and I, 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 I think that what some of the comments that Dean and Cory made, you know, makes sense, and I can understand that, and I appreciate the fact that he says, I don't care what you do, if you make it, I philosophically disagree. I accept that, and I know where he's coming from because that's, I've done that. So anyway, let's go ahead with public comment.
Okay. We're gonna go ahead with public comment, understanding that we're probably gonna do a revision on this, on, on this piece. Let's see, Scott LaJoy. Scott? You'll need to unmute. Scott LaJoy?
Hi, yes. Yep, I'm here. I represent the Cape Cod, Cape Cod and Islands Association of Realtors, and Ryan Castle had put together a letter, and I'm speaking on his behalf this evening. I, I really, I think that I share some of the viewpoints of, from, that member Castro made about philosophical, just looking at a, a transfer fee that they do, they do target a small amount of, of people in the, in the real estate market who are making these, these transactions. We feel, the Association of Realtors feels that Chatham has made huge strides in, in addressing the affordable and attainable housing issues that are, that are happening in town, and we see them as, a lot of headway has been made, but we just can't support a, a transfer fee at that, at this time, and given that there's still a lot of other funding options that are available, that the Community Preservation Act funding is available to, to make affordable housing strides as well. The other things on the warrant are, are, are very noble, and I think that those should be passed, but we just can't support a, a transfer fee.
All right. Thank you, Scott. We will go on to the next public commenter is Rick Levitt. Mr. Levitt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to add my encouragement of a real estate transfer tax, or a real estate transfer fee as a source of funding for, for the Chatham Housing Trust. The trust is designed to address the real shortage of housing in Chatham for Chatham's working families. Without adequate funding and investment, the housing shortage will continue to grow, forcing more young working families to move away, leaving Chatham as an exclusive community of retirees like me and summer, and summer residents. We will lose the diverse character of our community that is one of its most desirable features. Chatham needs to provide adequate housing for all, for all its residents. Assessing a modest fee on the purchase of a higher-priced home will make it possible for the trust to help provide lower-priced homes for working families. This is an efficient and fair method of raising revenue needed by the trust. Make no mistake about it, even if the check is written by the seller, which it won't be, the buyer is paying the fee. Like the selling agent's commission, a transfer fee will be built into the price paid by the buyer, and buyers have an interest in maintaining a diverse character of the historic community they are coming to. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The real estate, real estate transfer fee petition, more or less tracks the petition of Nantucket, which I think selectman Castro mentioned. That was pending in the general court last year as Bill 3637. And as Jeff stated, Nantucket's petition is only one of many, and there are at least seven similar petitions that have been submitted by several cities and towns, including both Provincetown and Truro. Legislation has also been introduced in the general court with 17 house sponsors to allow every city and town in Massachusetts to impose a real estate transfer fee of up to 2% for transfers of $1 million and above. The bottom line here is that affordable housing legislation like this is, its time has come. My only issue with the proposed legislation for Chatham is that it may be too conservative in terms of the fee percentage and the initial 10-year duration of the of the fee. I would suggest perhaps a shorter duration of five years, after which either the fee could be either decreased or increased, and the threshold of $2 million could be changed as well. There is nothing in the proposed litigation or the legislation that would prohibit the town from actually lowering the threshold below $2 million. I think there is a statute that would probably prohibit it from going below the state minimum or median value of a home. On an earlier point, on the preference of local residents, if the affordable housing is ownership-based rather than rental-based, to the extent local residents don't qualify for the housing, for whatever reason that might be, those who do qualify become town residents, and hopefully are families bringing school-aged children to town. The key for most affordable housing and attainable housing for Chatham, in my opinion, is ownership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Elaine Gibbs, you're next.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate Corey's and Dean's comments. I think they were really thoughtful. With all due respect to Nantucket, I think the document is pretty poorly written. It's unnecessarily complicated. And I think that the key should be to preserve assets that are transferable within families. That's what we all work for in our lives, is to leave something to our children. And to have this, where they have to hire an attorney just to interpret this, it is very confusing. And I think it's not ready for primetime. And I think the fact that none of, very few, if any, have passed the state test is because it needs work. And I don't think this is something we want to be the first to do, because we may find out it actually hurts our long-term generational people who have lived here, and their only asset is their home. And it is a tax. The state calls it a tax, a transfer tax. The county calls it a transfer tax. It's a tax. I'm glad, and I appreciated Jeffrey Dykens talking on the radio, making sure it was clear that the purchaser was to pay it rather than the seller, because the sellers are the people who have lived in town many, many years. But I think this is something that we want to do right and not hurt families. So, and I think it is a great resource for affordable housing, but it's got to be done right. And there can't be a lot of loopholes for people to drive trucks through. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Carolyn. Carolyn McClellan. I'm sorry, I should use your last name. Go ahead, Carolyn.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so just a couple of things. Obviously, having a revenue stream that can fund the types of housing we hope to have in the future is absolutely critical to sustaining a demographic that includes a broad range of income levels. So we need to find a funding source that can be applied to both capital A and attainable housing. And I mean, all three of the home loan petitions address that, but we need to get a revenue stream that will sustain that in the future. And I just want to point out that no one here this evening, whether you're elected, or volunteers, or members of the community, are obligated to advocate for the financial interests of multimillionaires who have yet to move here. All right, the people who live here, you're worried about generations of folks who have lived here, they're not going to pay the tax. It's whoever buys their property. And I'm all for creating exemptions for inter-family transactions. I don't have a problem with that at all, but everybody else should be subjected to this. I mean, I know there's lots of nuances about how the tax is going to be arranged, but we need to create a revenue stream. And just a comment on the Realtors having an issue with this. I know they have a big lobby at the state level. And, you know, Realtors are the one industry that right now are benefiting from this housing situation. They're making more money. Do one sale, they make more money on it. I don't begrudge them that. Every industry has its ups and downs. I know that the Realtors are very competitive within their own industry, but I don't think it's responsible for us to take the interest of one industry over the interest of every other industry in this town, which is begging, crying, dying for employees that we don't have. So what's going to happen, you know, when COVID leaves, we're going to have the same old problem, where we don't have enough people, the staff, the businesses in town, you can't get a plumber, you can't get an electrician. All those problems are still here. And for those of you who are number crunchers, I don't know how you can reconcile the financial stability of a community that's just watching the exodus of its entire workforce. I think we have to do something about that. So, and then the other issue, I think it was Dean who brought up the idea that the price of the house, as housing prices rise, we might want to change the limit, it might go up, we might not want to keep it at $2 million. In my opinion, as pricing, as housing prices rise, the problem gets worse and worse and worse. So I don't see any reason why we should lower it and make it easier. And if Corey's comment, I believe if I understood what he was saying, was if we impose this tax, all of a sudden, there'll be less houses for sale for over $2 million, I would be really surprised if that was the impact. I don't think it's going to be a detriment to the cash flow of houses that are for sale. Maybe I misinterpreted what Corey says. I see his hand flew up. All right, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn. Corey, did you want to clarify your statement?
Yeah, I just want to kind of clarify. My thought is, if the, you know, say this threshold is $2 million, or $1 million, whatever threshold we set, is will there be an inventory of housing that is without this fee, tax fee, whatever you want to call it, that would be more desirable by people who want to come in and buy it for investments? And that, you know, they're going to a smaller-scale structure, and that is their business plan to buy up more lower, I hate not lower end, but lower-priced housing that would strain our inventory for the goals that we're shooting for? That is my concern, is that, you know, certain business people look at the numbers, they crunch the numbers, and they say, well, I can get X amount of houses that are exempt from this fee, or I can get into a bigger property that I got to pay X amount of fee, what's my return on investments, et cetera, et cetera. I just don't know, because, you know, Cape Homes, it's a business. There's a lot of people making a lot of money out on the Cape for buying homes and renting them and everything else. So I guess I throw that out for some feedback and some thought, because that is my concern. We're diving into affordable, attainable housing, and we recognize the needs, and we want to make a significant impact and progress in those needs. I just hate to do something that's going to kick us in the rear as an unforeseen consequence of doing something that we think we're doing the right way. That is the question I'm throwing out there.
So you're thinking that people are going to buy up properties that are under $2 million to avoid the $10,000 they'll have to pay?
Correct, correct.
All right. Okay. Jeff?
So Corey, would you suggest we lower the threshold?
I'm throwing it out there for conversation. You lower the threshold, you just keep moving that inventory pocket lower and lower, you know. So I don't know. I don't know. I don't have an answer for that. That's what I've been struggling with, because, you know, is it a million dollars? I mean, a million-dollar home is, you know, it's a little above average home in Chatham right now for price. So, you know, I don't have a distinct answer, and this is what I'm struggling with, because I know the goal, the fund, the goal for the funds is pure. I just want to make sure we're taking the right path, and we're not putting any hurdles in front of us that are unnecessary. So.
Okay. Jeff, anything else?
Yeah, no, but I take Corey's argument kind of to the end. I would say he's arguing to lower the threshold. But I want to research that a little bit, and think about levels and thresholds and stuff, and bring it back with a clean, with a clean proposal. Thanks.
All right, Jeff. Peter?
Yeah, just a quick comment, what Corey mentioned. I understand what he's saying. Let's look at, our goal is to increase affordable, attainable housing, and that's going to be structured to meet certain needs or certain people. I mean, we're going to make sure that they go to that, to that group. You know, a rising housing market, all housing, at the upper end, it's going to drive up the housing costs of every home in town, in some ways, to Dean's position. Whether people come in with a business case that they're going to buy one at $1 million, yeah, oh, okay. That's going to be hard to decide. But I know I've seen data on how many homes are for sale, and what is sold. I don't remember what they are off the top of my head, but I know that there's a supply problem here. And there aren't enough homes for, at certain levels, that people want to buy. And I can give you an example of, in my own family, my son is looking to buy a house, and he gets outbid by $50,000 every time he turns around. You know, so what happens in this kind of a skewed market is, is that we need to focus on what we need as far as a supply, because the other part of that is going to go up. Whether or not, I can, I always, in my own mind, I was thinking, you know, maybe we need some sort of a way to see that the housing is increasing after $2 million, or whatever it is, and we keep up with that. But we need to keep it short. And I agree with some of the folks that mentioned that maybe we keep it at five years and look at it again. But the point, the other point is, where are these funds going to come from? Where are we going to have a continual increase of funding? We were lucky, not lucky, we were fortunate, maybe in the last couple of years, we had a couple of housing developments where we had money put into the trust fund by a developer, rather than build a house, you put money in there. Where else is it going to come from? CPA? Are we going to continually get $1 million out of CPA and skew that CPA funding to housing? I think it's a priority, that's the right case, but there are going to be a certain amount of people after a year or two are going to say, hey, that's not really such a great idea. And do we then try to put free cash, maybe pump up our free cash, double our free cash? Otherwise, where are we getting the funds? And that's where I come down from. And I don't want to argue this right now, but I just, I think those are the discussions maybe we should have, but I think that we need to do something, make a decision before town meeting and put it to the voters, if we can craft something that meets maybe 60, 70%. And the point is, too, that this has to go to the state. And again, it's a statement, you know. We have a problem, state. You guys have had a legislation up there since 2019 to look at this, and they, and I think theirs is way out of, high, too high. But it gives the option for us to do this at our level. So unless somebody comes up with a brilliant idea on how to do this, we could sit here and say, it will never work, never work, and we're never going to get enough money to do our affordable and attainable housing. And that's where I'm coming from. So it's not an answer. It's just, I agree, we should look at it maybe a little more.
Okay. Well, I think we're heading in that direction. Dean, your hands up, and we'll wrap this conversation up and move forward.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, just two comments. If, in fact, the threshold is lowered, and approximates a million and a half or a million, I think the proposal is going to be even less palatable than it is now, and you're going to affect, you're going to affect families that, you know, this is the traditional family home, and maybe people in their older years want to downsize. I understand the purchase is going to pay, purchase is going to pay in any event, no matter what the statute says. The second point, in terms of funding, you know, we just, we just tonight voted on one parcel of land in South Chatham to tap into free cash, basically. That's where half of that money is going to come from. If, in fact, we feel there are certain properties that we want to purchase or develop, and the number of those is very, very limited, as we know, we can raise all the money we want, but we're not creating new land in this town unless we're going to start taking property by eminent domain, or offering to buy people out of their homes to put developments up. We have a resource. It's called the tax levy, or free cash. We also have CPC. I understand what you're saying, Peter, about not overly taxing, no pun intended, the CPC account. But I think there are sources, and I think if there's a project that's really worthwhile, we go to town meeting and tap free cash, or hit the tax levy with it, rather than having this permanent, it's permanent for 10 years scheme to raise, you know, these earmarked funds. I just don't think it's necessary. So those are my final comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Jeff, do you want to wrap this up?
I do, yeah. If I might, you know, it's not so much a scheme as a fee, Dean. And I think the $2 million was chosen as a level, high enough level, so that our local folks wouldn't be impacted. That's why, that's why I chose $2 million bucks. But certainly open to other considerations. Also open to consideration of having some kind of an adjusting level, if you will. If the overall property values, the assessed value, you know, goes to, the median sales price right now is 900 grand. If it goes to one and a half, maybe it's, you know, maybe it's 1, 8, and 3, I don't know. So it could be a sliding scale as well. We can play with that a little bit. But I do think it's important we weigh in. And this is not regressive, and it doesn't affect the tax rate, which Selectman Castro just suggested, that we go to the folks and, you know, raise the property tax. I'm not looking to do that. I think this, it's, it's a certain logic for me, in that we are placing a fee on the highest end of the scale, whose efforts in the market, you can't affect the market, but the market has created this problem, and now we're going to try to address the issues by exacting a fee on the market. And we're not alone. It's up and down the Cape. And the Cape's got an issue. In Chatham, it's exacerbated, it's, you know, it's exaggerated in Chatham, in P-Town, in Truro, in Nantucket. And this is a way to fund it. So anyway, I'll bring our recrafted issue back. I think the interfamiliar issue is a major one, and we'll recraft that. There was some discussion about levels, but I still think it's a very viable approach. I think we need to get on record, and I would like to place it at town meeting when we have a draft, everybody, you know, at least four of us accept. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So we're going to table this item, unless somebody wants to make a motion, but I think everybody's going to respect the process here, and respect that Jeff's going to bring us back a rewrite, and we'll have a further discussion on it. Is that what I'm understanding?
It's fine with me.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, everybody, for the feedback on that. Our next is special legislation. This is the third revote of a prevailing wage exemption for the town. This is something that, let's see, I think Jill, do you want to just give us a little brief explanation, and then we?
Sure. So this is the third iteration of legislation that expires every two years, and it has been stuck in committee with a couple other municipalities that are seeking the same type of exemption. So prevailing wage, as you know, does provide, provides an added cost to some projects as we have to abide by the prevailing wage, which is set by the state. But also, for projects that are $50,000 and below, it also limits the option for local contractors to bid on projects because of the administrative burden for the paperwork and having to get certified. So this would do nothing to take away any of the safety, the worker safety, that still would be in place. It just provides us some flexibility to get local bidders on projects on Cape. And the board, as you recall, a number of years ago, had sought that exemption with the Marconi project when that was being renovated, and that was able to save the taxpayers a substantial amount of money. So third try, I would advise not to give up yet. There's other towns that are seeking it, and this is how it's drafted, and there's no proposed change to it.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Jill, or a motion moving forward? Go ahead, Jeff.
Move to place the article seeking to recertify H3581 Home Rule Petition for Prevailing Wage Exemption on the 2021 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's take further discussion. See none, let's take a vote. Corey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And I say aye. Okay, vote to recommend.
Move to recommend the selfsame article seeking to recertify H3581 Home Rule Petition for Prevailing Wage Exemption to the 2021 Annual Town Meeting.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote. Corey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay. Thanks, Jill.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our final, before we go into executive session, we have committee appointments. We have three, I think it's three. Let's see, we have committee appointment zoning board of Let's see, we have committee appointment, zoning board of appeals, conservation commission, and Cape Cod Commission representative. Our first is for zoning board of appeals. We have one vacancy for an unfulfilled full membership term June 30, 2022. And then we have one vacancy for an unfulfilled associate member term to June 30, 2021, which we may want to extend to June 30, 2022. Of the members, associate members that are available that would like to be moved forward to full membership, we have three associate members under consideration. David Thompson, appointed July 2018, Dennis Sullivan, appointed May 2017, and Megan Story, appointed June 2020. So, I'll accept a motion here for appointment. Jeff?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to appoint David Thompson to the zoning board of appeals as a full member until June 30, 2022, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Dean seconded. Do we have any other motions to appoint? Okay, I'm hearing none. Let's take a vote on David Thompson for, to be moved to a full membership. Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And chair says aye. Okay, we have one vacancy for an unfulfilled associate member term to June 30, 2021, as I mentioned, that we may want to move to 2022. We had two interviews, William Grau, who was interviewed March 2, 2021, and Terrence Sullivan, who was interviewed on March 16, 2021. And I believe Mr. Sullivan expressed interest in the conservation commission is under consideration for that vote as well. So, do we have a motion to appoint a member to the zoning board of appeals as an associate member?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I move to appoint William Grau to the zoning board of appeals as an associate member until June 30, 2022, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second. Any other motions to appoint? Okay, let's hear a vote to approve William Grau. Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay. All right, we have one vacancy for an unfulfilled full membership term to June 30, 2023 for the conservation commission. And then we have two vacancies for an unfulfilled associate member term to June 30, 2020, which we may want to consider an appointment to 2022. We have one member who expressed interest in the conservation commission, and that was Terrence Sullivan, who I mentioned before, who was interviewed on March 16. Cory?
Yes, I move to appoint Terrence Sullivan to the conservation commission as a full member until June 30, 2023, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote. Is there any other appointments for this candidate? Okay, let's take a vote. Dean?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Chair says aye. All right, our second is, or lastly, Tom Wilson has served as our town representative to the Cape Cod Commission since February 2019. His appointment expires April 24, 2021. Mr. Wilson would like to be considered for his appointment. And so, we did get a letter from the Cape Cod Commission, and it was just, it was from the Howard Mitchell, the chairman, who just simply asked us to consider reappointing Mr. Wilson or make a new appointment for the three-year term effective April 25, 2021. So, motion?
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Tom Wilson as the town's representative to the Cape Cod Commission on April 24, 2024, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay, thank you very much. That's going to conclude our business for the regular business meeting, and now we're going to move into, and I would like a motion for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees to move to executive session.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that the Affordable Housing Fund Board of Trustees go into executive session under Massachusetts general law, is chapter 39, section 23B, number six, to consider the purchase exchange taking lease or value of real property, parenthesis, private property acquisition for affordable slash attainable housing, if such discussion may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the governmental body with no return to open session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote of the trustees. Dean?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Megan Story. Megan Story. Bruce Bean?
Aye.
Megan's there still. Okay, and the chair says aye. All right, so we will convene in executive session in another meeting room. Jill, thank you. Thanks to Katie and Ally for their presentations tonight, and the rest of the staff as well. So, thank you. Have a good evening, Chatham.
Thank you for the public input.
And the public input was terrific.